Everybody.
Good evening.
Are you?
I don't know.
We're good so far.
I see Sam and is that Meredith next to Sam? Hi, and let's see. Oh, gosh, is that Ashton? Hi Ashton, hi Mark, hi Lois, hi Yanni, hi David, I think. Yeah, and who's in the room behind Yanni?
Sarah.
Hi Sarah. Well, I'm sad I'm not with you, but I'm really excited to be where I am.
Where's that?
Oh, sorry, you don't know, doesn't it look like fake background?
Snow cabin somewhere.
It looks like a fake background, but it is real, it's my husband's parents' cabin up in kind of central Minnesota. And we're here with them to spend a week.
It'll be a late night for you, Maddie.
Yes, it is, but I'm here. And hi Cherie, hi Christina. And then let's see, I heard that Melissa has a dog emergency, so she'll be a few minutes late and will join remotely, so I don't, is Nick in the room?
I know he had a family emergency, so he'll be missing tonight.
Okay, whoever is managing the room, if you could watch for Melissa. And then one, two, three, six, seven, eight, nine, okay, so that takes care, we're all accounted for, right, did I count my ducks right? Six, seven, eight, nine, that'd be nine, okay, cool, well then let's officially call our meeting to order. Actually, I also wanted to ask Mark and Ashton. Would would you like me to hand over the chair gavel tonight since you're in the room Ashton, and that's where the most of you are? To run the meeting? Okay, well, I think that might be easier for everybody. I'm sure my connection is okay, but it might be a little wonky having the chair chiming in remotely. When there's room discussion in the room.
Sounds good, so I guess we'll call the meeting to order?
Thank you.
Get a chance to take a peek at the meeting minutes? Any edits or corrections or any comments?
And if not. We did that on the call, didn't we go through, did we get minutes for their call?
I saw that it was for your.
For the call.
For the six.
The six?
Yeah.
Yeah, these, these are them. Yeah, we have your email to edit, added noted, and we won't be drafting new minutes tonight for later consideration. When Nick returns, we're going to create those draft minutes from the recording. As long as we speak and get it on the record, they'll be in the next set of minutes. Minutes tonight are from last week's special.
I sent to Nick just that I was late and I came in first, so but I'm sure he's. Yeah, that and I'm pulling it up here, I think it also said I was here, but I was not, I was out of town. So although I'd like credit for being here, I truthfully wasn't. Okay. Oh, and you know what, and I'm sorry, I skipped the landing note, but we'll go back to that in just a second. So any, any other comments about the meeting minutes, and if not, is there a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second, second.
Hi.
So to go backwards, sorry about that, does anyone want to read the land acknowledgement? The edited land acknowledgement from I think two meetings ago? Sure, great, thank you.
We'd like to acknowledge we are on the traditional land of a rich and diverse group of native peoples who have called this area home for more than 10,000 years. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the descendants of these native peoples who are still here today.
Fabulous, thank you. And agenda is here, is there a motion to approve the agendas presented?
So moved.
Second, second, all in favor?
Hi.
Great. You already did the meeting minutes, so then the next meeting date? We have the special meeting dates that we'd sent, or that Mark had said March through June. And do you have that next date available? Sure that is?
Yeah. Let's see, Monday, the fourth.
Monday, the fourth.
The, the primary issue I learned in scheduling the first special meeting is not to overlap with other public meetings. So that people can attend. Also that we only have one Zoom webinar license, and we're not going to get a second one. So these days went from when do we have a quorum and best availability? To these are the potential dates that don't have a conflict, and there's very few of them. Ideally, they would work out, I think May has an option. But the importance is that we would then work with the city clerk, they would create one link for all the dates we choose. They would set it up, and then the electronic part of the meeting would work. We took a chance with Zoom meeting and were relatively lucky.
So Monday, March fourth.
I am not able to be there, but I understand that all the other dates I was able to be there, so.
Should there have been a link provided? Was there already a Zoom set out?
No, they, they did one Zoom meeting link for last week.
Okay.
And a Zoom webinar link has not been created until I give the dates.
Okay, got it, I was wondering why I missed that March fourth, but probably. Okay, March fourth. Meredith, yeah, join, is everybody else available for that date?
I am, yes.
I am most likely out, I might be able to join remotely from out of state, but it's different. But I'll make, I'll make the rest.
Great.
May I ask a question of the group, could, for those people who can't attend the special meetings, and since we're getting the materials in advance, could, could we commit to submitting comments, you know, marking up the drafts with any feedback we have, so that your voice can be represented in our conversations?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other head nods in here, it sounds good.
Okay.
Any other comments on the meeting dates or? Good to move on?
If they all work, we could, we could go with them as presented, or the option is instead of May eighth, May second also works. May just suggested her time getting materials out, but if we didn't have a quorum, May second would also work.
I have a potential conflict with the second, so I would prefer the eighth. If you're on the second.
Wednesday, Thursday's are going to be tough for me, but I'll try to.
So the second and the eighth.
All the Wednesday, Thursday, so I can make that point, but all the other ones I don't have a darn this to.
Alright.
You mean a motion for?
No, it's just discussion to advise city clerk.
Great, so now we'll transition to public comments. We have Sarah in the room.
Hi. Hi, my name is Sarah Phillips, I live at 18533267 in northeast. My first firm, and I just wanted to say we're, I'm with the Climate Action Committee. And we're, we were bringing our report to a consultant that got delayed because of a month, so we're all big surprise, we're running a little late, and I'm sure that Mark and Christine are going to update you on sort of some of the issues we have without coordinating with you, but our intention is to continue, is to integrate the pieces of the conflict we have now in the elements that are existing. And then in a year, essentially adding climate element as a amendment to the conflict, so that we get the fulsome. All the good news that we have, so that's sort of where we are, and we're, we're going to pivot to continuing to work with the planning condition and doing outreach, we're going to do, we're developing a list of ordinances and resolutions that we think council had just passed because we think they're so good. And we're you know, we're doing four things and I only remember three, and so when we're going to do one other faculty listening, which will come to me, I tried to get it anyway on my phone, but I couldn't get to it.
Comic book?
Yeah, oh, we're doing a comic book, we are doing a comic book, that's part of our outreach program, how do you get to? We're still having trouble with finding students, I'm trying to get into the high school to speak with them, seems like that's an ardent place to get into these days, it's hard to get into high schools. But I have, now I have students who are helping to get into the right place in high school, so we can add students to our committee as we pivot into the secondary. Thank you.
Is there anybody else online?
Not making raises, Sam. Julian, would, would you like to provide public comment?
No, thank you, thanks for asking.
Thank you.
Hi, hi Julian.
I believe that's it.
Great, so moving along, this would now be our time from a city councilor, it's not so council member, but.
Yeah, she emailed me, she was going to be out today.
Yeah, okay. Great, so we'll look at old business now, comprehensive plan draft element discussion.
May I speak?
Please.
I just wanted to, as a catch you up, and just to report out to the group. I only got feedback from Sam, Yanni, and Lois on the document and, and forwarded consolidated those comments and forwarded them over to Christina this evening. But I did want to just point out that in looking at all the notes, you know, from our discussion last week. And looking at the comments that came in, there were, you know, a number of items, as, as most of you will remember from our discussion. That were captured in, in real time, but it appears that the, sort of the biggest, maybe the most impactful thing that we had not resolved, and then I think, you know, we could pass it to Christina. Maybe to guide us through any questions she has, but it was the land use designations, the labels. Do you guys recall that, it's kind of where we very first started on page 10 of the document, the actual, like, it says 10 on the document. And I feel like that's something that might be nice to hear from Christina on, because those designations have a trickle down effect through the whole land use section. So I just wanted to offer that as summary, and then as a suggestion maybe for a starting place to quickly wrap up land use so that we can move into the other sections, what, and, and I'm just proposing that, I defer to the, the whole.
No, sounds good.
I can share my screen, and we can look at those together really quickly alongside the comment that Maddie sent to me. If you bear with me for just a moment while I get the comment fully resized, so that's a little. Alright, well, I'll share my screen anyway, we'll look at it together. Okay, so what we are looking at, and I apologize since this is on the fly, it's still a little bit messy. The land use designations are how you describe essentially the intensity of use, the range of intensity of uses in different parts of your cop plan, or different parts of your city, for the purposes of setting policies for, for how those areas will develop. Right now, your current designations are conservation residential low, conservation residential moderate, single family residential moderate, single family residential high, multifamily low, and multifamily high. We had originally proposed some, some changes to those, and following our last discussion on the land use element, we came up with some additional options for consideration. It looks like you all had a great discussion, and this is a comment that Maddie sent, again, I apologize, this is a little small, but it said that there was some concern about the word conservation used in this context. Voiced by Yana, Sam suggested we refer to the legislative history for this designation before removing it. This may be found as far back as 1998 or 1999. Lois had a broader suggestion that we move to these labels, low density residential, moderate density residential, high density residential, multi-unit low, multi-unit moderate, and multi-unit high. It's unclear if labels like these will properly simplify these designations, oversimplify these designations, and/or create problematic conflicts with any legislative mandate or best practice. And you asked for input from SCJ on this. So if anybody wants to jump off with the discussion, or I'd be happy to share my thoughts on it. Let me know how you'd like to proceed.
I will just make one comment that I think we didn't talk about last week. These are all, in fact, the old ones are all, in fact, the definitions that are used in the municipal code. So by changing them, we'll just be, you know, creating some potential confusion, an issue that needs to be cleaned up afterwards, vis a vis the municipal code.
Yeah, I guess I would just, just for Christina, and if anybody missed the meeting, my point in raising the issue about conservation is that we have conservation needs and sensitive areas across all of these zones. And I feel like the terminology of naming those ones, the biggest, the biggest zone lots we have is, I don't know, it's a little bit disingenuous in my book, I think it's been used to, to kind of say these must stay really big, and I'm fine if they stay the way they are, I just don't think that the word conservation is, it's like a label without a meaning here. As far as I'm concerned, so I just don't think it's helpful, I think it's a little bit misleading, I think we have conservation needs everywhere.
Christina, did you have any, you said you had some thoughts on that as well, do you mind sharing that?
Yeah, so I, I will admit, this is a little off the cuff, since I didn't, I didn't have a chance to review everything in detail. You know, before, before this meeting tonight. But the, the suggestions that are included here, I think are just fine. I, I think that if we want to pivot away from using the term conservation in this context, that that's acceptable, and that the simplification that you suggested will work. The, kind of the, the driver behind the conservation tag seems to be a response to where streams primarily are located. And I think the intention, when this was originally developed, was to, to speak to limiting development intensity in kind of the buffer area of those streams. So I, I, I don't necessarily recommend strongly that, that we need to get away from using the term conservation here. But Yana, you're absolutely right, that there are conservation needs across the city, not just in the stream corridors. So I think that recognizing that and moving to the labeling system that Lois proposed, it will work just fine.
I would just add that that label was put in place before we had strong critical areas. I mean, this label's been around since the least, the late 90s. And we did not have a really strong set of critical areas regs, and we actually do, I mean, I, I've looked at regs across a lot of cities. And we, especially on our streams, there are very few cities that put 115 feet on streams like McLeer. And like, which I think is awesome, I mean, I'm a fish biologist, okay? So to me, that date was meaningful, maybe when it was created, I don't think it's that meaningful now. Because we don't need to, in my view, use the presence of streams in their buffers to, to say we must have these big lots, because we actually have really strong regs around protecting the streams and wetlands and so forth, so that's, that's where I'm coming from, I think it's kind of dated. And hence not really helpful or, or that relevant for today, so that's where I'm at.
A couple of comments. I, I'd actually love to ask city staff, because this has implications for you guys, you know, downstream, once this stuff gets implemented, I don't know, just, we can start thinking about whether that.
My professional opinion, I like the flavor that conservation has. But I also agree that with Yanni's comment, we have strong critical areas, and it applies no matter what the destination is. So I, I would be in total agreement, and we can tell that story to Commerce and PSRC. And make sure it's internally consistent in the conflict. And then when we update the development regulations, carry the, the correct terms through to there. So I think you can move in that direction, the only thing that I don't have is the map for replacement word for it.
Super low, super.
I, I'd love to chime in.
Yes.
I, I'd, I'd love to chime in, I just, I, I, I wanted to hear Mark, you know, what, what he said about this sort of having this down, no pun intended, downstream effect into our municipal code. But I wanted to clarify that while this, these conservation zones are for RS 10 and 15 or 20, sorry, I'm not at that part of the document, when, when you look at the map on page 16, that designation, my understanding was really to sort of call out those stream corridors, and it's not that there aren't lots that are smaller, it's just that there was this discouragement between from future subdivision, I don't know, there aren't actually that many lots in that area. You know, at least it's my neck of the woods, that are you know, necessarily like these ginormous slots that are being preserved, I think it's, it's more to sort of suggest that we want to be cautious in these areas. And, you know, I'm not opposed to keeping it, just to eliminate a, a volume of work. But also to just keep for, you know, in perpetuity, this understanding that these zones were created to overlay these these stream corridors, and so I, I'm not opposed to it, particularly since all of these areas are going to get swept up in you know, the new changes where duplexes, you know, are allowed, and we also currently allow, you know, an ADU and a DADU on these lots, so it's not that more living units aren't going to be on them, it's just they're going to have a lighter touch in terms of, you know, development pressures, particularly, you'll recall having just done the reasonable use exemption, if we start dividing these lots up further, those lots, you know, may inevitably have a state right to, to, you know, to be developed under reasonable use if they're, if they have the right to subdivide. And they have the right to develop even if they're encumbered by critical areas. We inherently begin to undermine our protections even with our critical areas ordinance, so yeah, I'm, I'm for keeping them.
Any other comments on this?
Yeah, the second comment I'd like to make is just to kind of remind everybody that this is not the municipal code, and I, you know, I would encourage everybody to think about maybe making this document a brilliant identity and a readable, accessible document. And, and just try to kind of make that delineation in our minds, this is a, a vision statement, a policy statement that helps, you know, when it does come to, you know, passing these ordinances, it's kind of a guiding voice and a positional document, so I, I don't think it's our job to try to, to flesh this out right now, but, and I think, you know, Commissioner Bronte is, is hinting at that and has been commenting on that, that's you know, and the, the language I think should, should really be readable and accessible to the general public.
Thank you. Thanks.
So are you saying leave conservation as the, as the word that we're using now?
No, I'm saying as we are, you know, caching out the, the words and the language, just consider that, is that, that, that we want to make this a readable document. In terms of this is not the municipal code, that these are not ordinances that we are trying to pass, but really just.
So I understand that, but what are you suggesting? I mean, you're making that suggestion, you're making that broad suggestion, but what are you, in regards to this conservation, the word conservation, what are you suggesting?
I, I, you know, my suggestion is that we do have a critical overlays, we do have quite strong code, zoning code in the building process. That, you know, you can't just do whatever you want, you have to go through the permitting process, and again, that is part of the zoning. That's the ordinances that we have in municipal code that governs that process, so critical areas, conservation, there, there are places for that in the municipal code already. So what I'm saying is, if you want to keep conservation, I'm okay with that, but really, you know, this is, this is really not the place to try to hash out, you know, the I mean, we could sit here and hash out, but I want this document to be, I want the spirit of this document to be passed on to the community and identify it. Does that answer your question?
Totally.
Yeah.
I, I, and I'll push back on that a little bit, I think this is not a document that the community reads, and it, and it actually is an important policy document, so in it inherently isn't a community facing document that is always going to be readable, because it's, it's loaded with jargon that helps us actually write ordinance and code, so I just, I, I, I take your point, Lois, and I think it's a good one where we can. But I want to keep in mind the purpose of this document isn't for the community, the vision document is for the community, and it's plain spoken. But this one is very much about policy that leads to ordinance, so I just, I'll just throw that alongside your comments to, you know, you know, provide a little bit of levity. Or a little bit of balance to, you know, the fact that this does have some really official use, and, and we're just not going to be able to make it always a community friendly.
I, I, I would disagree, I, I mean, the, the general populace of the city of Lake Forest Park is a highly educated group of people. These are people that are curious, that are, are, I mean, the education level is really high, I, I don't understand why this would not be an accessible document to the general public, to the general residents of the city. I mean, the, the people I interact with, you know, the mom groups, these are highly educated people. And I.
I'm not, I'm not saying anything about education, I'm saying there are words that mean something in land use planning, and, and so I'm not sure what we're arguing about, about at this point, I'd like to get back to just like the land use designation labels. But I, I was just saying that at the same time, we're not always going to be able to distill this down into something that's understandable on its own with a read through, you will have to understand certain definitions and what they mean when they're used in this context of policy, that's, that's all I'm saying, I'm not saying that people aren't highly educated here, it's just, it is a technical document. Can, can I make a motion so that we can move on, can I make a motion to just maybe have a vote on who would like to have the word conservation? I, I feel like we're just, we're, we're kind of not moving on, and this, we have a lot to discuss tonight, can I make a motion to get a vote on who wants that word in there and who doesn't?
I'll second your motion.
There is a motion.
Yeah, I think, I think our motion is to, let's just get a vote on here, right?
So are we?
Yes.
To use Lois's suggestions?
Yeah.
And if I, we already voted on that, are we reading? I guess I'm confused.
So there's a process question that needs to be asked here before we, I think, before we move to making a motion such as this. So when we come to a point where we're seemingly in disagreement, or there's different.
So when we come to a point where we're seemingly in disagreement or there's different opinions, right? How do we resolve that so that we can move forward? So what is the process?
We've used just straw man and that's what we used last Tuesday. So I'm glad for that and we don't need a motion for that.
And I tried to kind of like make sure that I understand both, yeah, both positions. So Lois, you're saying. That conservation, while really important to our community, there are other mechanisms. And other places where that will be done.
Correct.
And so we don't need to necessarily have the word in these land use. Um and so we can go with low density residential, moderate density, those five words. And Maddie, I think you're saying that conservation is such an important part of our community that. Having that word, even though maybe it's a little bit repetitive or or doesn't necessarily need to be there. It just shows values that the community holds.
Uh almost on mine, mine is, mine is that it's it's a designated area that when you look at it on the map, it's a, it's a stream shed. That's being protected. And so conservation maybe isn't the best word, but it is designating that we have. Um a stream shed in here that we're trying to protect by keeping some low to moderate density.
So this conversation now brings us back to what Sherry proposed.
So now that we understand both sides, it sounds like everyone's in agreement with how Meredith uh summarize those. Is there a motion to? Adjust the word from conservation to low density, high density?
And we don't. Yeah, we don't have a, we don't need to do a motion here. We just need to find out like kind of, we just need to move on from the point. And one way we can do that is by doing a quick straw man, like those in favor of uh removing conservation. Yes or no, it allows you as the chair to figure out, you know, which direction the group wants to go. And then we could do a second straw man. To figure out, you know, do we want to go with the labels that Lois proposed or do we need more discussion? It just allows you to see where more discussion is needed or where we have, you know, enough consensus to move forward.
Do you have something to say?
No.
Okay. Um, just by show of hand.
Okay, sorry, I do us. So. I kind of actually like the. I do think that maybe something would be missing because all of them are mul- are multi-unit. Because all of them can have duplex on them. So I do like the, you know. High density two, high density one, low density residential uh two, low density residential one. And then even if not keeping conservation, I do feel like that is maybe an additional category, but. Something.
You're trying to find a way to do both.
I, yeah, I I I'm not.
So so I would like for us to describe.
Yep, okay. Okay, so show by show of hands, who would like to keep the word conservation in place? Okay. That's majority. So sounds like we can move on from that point. We'll keep the word conservation in place. Any other discussion on that topic?
Can we do a straw man? Can we do a straw man on option one, two, or three to see where everybody sort of stands? Maybe option four is we don't like any of them.
Option four can be Lois's.
Sure.
Uh we just. Keeping the current designation is still an option two.
Yeah, do you mind uh crossing out or moving the discussion box?
Yeah, yeah, happy to do that. Is that, is that all right?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Um those in favor for option one? Good. Option one's a no-go. Option two. We have two votes on that. Option three. One, two. Okay, so we have a tie for option two and three and option four would be. Lois's language. Which is. So we can act one, we like two, three, and four.
And actually, I could give my vote to option number four as well.
Yeah.
Mechanism in place, you guys, for the conservation. I I think it's just like, I, it gets confusing in life. Uh I think it's our, if you keep going further at the definitions, it gets so confusing and that's again why.
Commissioner David, myself, and Meredith all agreed that we are, we're flexible to go to four. So I think that's a majority, just for the sake of moving on. Option four, sounds good.
Yeah, but sounds perfect. Let's go.
All right, party on. Okay, um environmental quality.
Um before we move on, did anybody want me to go over the slide deck or anything? Um I know that you've all had a chance to look at all of the materials in advance, so maybe that's a bit of a moot point. But if anybody would find it beneficial to to start any part of the discussion, uh I am happy to do that.
I I would say definitely for the parts we didn't discuss. And I'm hoping that if we need to revisit anything we did at the special meeting, but I'd like to see the slides on them. Other two components or how do you talk through?
Are are you kind of agreeing like the these slide decks?
Yes. Yeah, so it was, it was, the slide deck itself was provided, um obviously without the benefit of any commentary. Um so I'm happy to go through it uh for the sake of posterity in the recording or if anybody would find it. Um helpful to have me discuss the content of the slides. Uh I did want to touch on the schedule in particular, although we can certainly do that at the end. Um so I'll I'll leave it up to you all if you want me to to do the thing.
Yeah.
I might say I feel like we have time because um Ashton and I was looking at uh like the feedback that was received. And there really was very little input on those two sections. So those might go pretty quickly anyway.
Great. Christina, if you wouldn't mind, that would be fabulous running through the slides.
Okay, all right, let me get over to my slides. All right, um so here we are on February twelve plus one, uh twenty twenty-four, February thirteen. Um uh so tonight, uh we're going to talk a little bit about revisions to the project schedule based on. Uh some some new information from subconsultants and some some coordination with the Climate Action Committee. Uh and the Department of Commerce and then we'll talk through, uh I'll skip the landy settlement since it sounds like we've. Um had some really great discussion on that. Uh we'll focus on environmental quality and community services and public safety elements. Uh so looking ahead, the schedule has changed a a little bit further. Um and I I apologize for that, but I'm hoping this is the last change. Uh in in our workflow. So today, February, we're focusing on land use, environmental quality and community services and public safety. In March, we'll begin our talk uh about climate. Uh and we'll also start a discussion on the transportation element with materials from uh Fair and Peers. April, we will see the housing material for the final time. We'll continue our conversation on climate and economic development. Um and then May and June are the remaining elements altogether. So um big changes to to look forward to uh transportation and housing discussion over the next two months. Uh so just a reminder, as we're all going through up uh reviewing, updating and reviewing the draft elements. Uh to keep this policy framework in mind, remember we're starting at a high level with goals that move the community collectively toward the vision. Um these are very high level statements uh that that kind of describe the direction we want to go. Policies give more specific uh more more specific guidance on how we're going to move towards that goal. And actions are the the most specific implementation steps that are are actionable items. For uh for different entities in the city to take. Our update objectives overall are to make sure that the update is complying with all of the required. Rules, regulations, and policies from the Growth Management Act, recent legislative amendments. King County's recently updated countywide planning policies and PSRC's Vision Twenty Fifty. Uh at the same time, we also want to respond clearly and effectively to the community vision, values, and priorities. Uh so I hope that's something that you see reflected in the work that we are presenting tonight. Um so we've already talked through the land use element. Um this is a a summary of the revisions. Um I'm gonna just kind of breeze through this. Um so since January, we made the. The um updates to uh provide options for land use designations, uh some additional equity focused policies. And some minor adjustments to our previously recommended revisions. Um you already went through the discussion guide in detail and I'm sure that um my questions have been thoroughly answered in the notes. That Chair uh Chair Larson sent to me earlier tonight. Uh so looking at the environmental quality element as kind of the first um new agenda topic for tonight. Uh what you'll see reflected in the document are these key changes. So uh once again broadly focused on uh equity related updates to different language. Uh and and some new policies that are equity forward. Uh we clarified some policies to be consistent with King County's countywide planning policies and Vision Twenty Fifty. Uh we recommended the uh elimination of some redundant policies where those started to appear in multiple places. And consolidating some related goals, uh those pertaining to wildlife. Uh we also added a placeholder for future climate planning, environmental policies. And uh identified some actions that we propose to relocate to an implementation section or chapter. Uh in the appendix, these were primarily just updates to word choice, uh again, mostly focused on centering equity. In that language. Um there were some uh some updates that we weren't quite able to finish uh in in time for. The special meeting packet and that is the data about tree canopy coverage and also waste disposal rates. Um I I suspect that um, well, we'll be working with city staff to to get updated numbers. Um but uh I don't think those are going to significantly change our policy direction. Um so we were comfortable moving forward with the recommendations as this. So with that, I would love to hear your thoughts on the questions that I posed in the discussion guide. Uh so question number one was related to how we want to start talking about the topic of resilience. In uh in the element as it's currently adopted. Resilience is talked about primarily as a response to potentially geologic hazard uh problems. And hazard mitigation can uh can be addressed more broadly as a component of resilience. There are some other components of resilience as well. Um so in thinking about resilience um and hazard mitigation and how those might work together. Um like how how do you think uh we should proceed with um with these topics? I had intended to have this be like more of an interactive session like last time, but would it be better if I just went through all of the questions and then? You all had open discussion?
Please.
Okay. Okay, so then uh question number two um was uh focused on brainstorming. How we might be able to prioritize the vulnerable populations or frontline communities uh for investment? Uh we did provide some suggestions in terms of um prioritizing certain. Certain kinds of investment related to like where new, say, street trees would go, those kinds of things uh to kind of front load the effort. In communities that uh are neighborhoods that are um uh have have less. Um or or have a greater need, um but wanted some feedback on that approach. Um I wanted to confirm that uh consolidating the two goals related to wildlife uh seemed like inappropriate. Uh inappropriate action and then um uh some uh some further feedback also on how we want to frame. The climate commitment. So some some specific feedback on how that uh that language has been um constructed. Would you like to pause here and talk environmental quality or do you want me to also introduce community services and public safety?
Um, can I just ask something?
Yep.
Okay, um I I I had only received, so Ashton and I, our last meeting, we talked about sending our feedback prior to this conversation. So we can zero in on key topics and I didn't receive feedback from um the majority of the group. Which is okay if you didn't have it. And so before we um, you know, I I I, to your point, Christina, this should be more interactive. But I wonder, based on the the comments or the lack of comments. Did you all feel like the edits that Christina provided us were? You know, appropriate and um or did any of it leave you, you know, feeling like, wait, 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 we need to have some discussion here?
Are we talking about the environmental quality?
Uh no, we we weren't able to tackle environmental quality or community service last time. And so we had agreed to uh read through the document. And sort of mark up things that were like Lois provided some language changes. Um but we were looking for items to focus our discussion tonight. And so I wonder if. If you all did do that review and did you not have discussion? And then that way we could kind of. Wrap up this section and move on to the next one. I I I don't think Christina, not being part of our meeting, doesn't know that that was the case. And so. Did everyone read through this section and were there any areas that warrant discussion? Or were we more or less?
Maddie, I'm sorry, which section are you talking about?
Uh environmental quality that.
Yeah, okay, for land use, we're on the uh second agenda. Okay, environmental quality.
Okay, so I'll I'll weigh in. I thought Christina's edits were mostly really good. Um I sent in a. One comment, I think, about plans that we reference in our call plan around environmental quality. But I thought, I, in general, I was reading them, having very few constructive comments. So I appreciate the. Changes that she recommended.
For those that haven't read it, um we have the email, the detail was shared, but it's around salmon habitat. Policy and a study that I can't recall the name, but.
And light, dark skies.
And dark skies.
I'm all about readability and I do appreciate the the redundant policies that like that being eliminated. And then having the issue of consolidating the related goals, I think that's a great add. And again, kind of helps to that readability of it.
I'll just chime in. I thought all the edits were, for the most part, very good. Um my comments were pretty. Focused um in one or two areas. And so I'm happy just to kind of go through the ones that people felt were important. After reading through it, I don't think we need to go page by page or line by line.
I I could share the two that I, and I sent these by email just so that they got somewhere. Under goal EQ six, air quality, noise abatement, and light pollution. Um there is already a policy six point three around promoting dark skies and. I'm peripherally involved in some work around uh the idea of dark skies, but specifically on the lakeshore. There's a really neat uh effort going on funded by the Department of Commerce, actually. That has both the muckle shoot and snow quality tribes involved, several cities involved and some NGOs involved. To try to promote um uh lighting that's friendly to the aquatic environment. So docks, yards, buildings, and because we have our data that shows that salmon predation. Goes up when there's too much light in the, on the lakeshore. So like at City of Sammamish or maybe it's Issaquah, has already started incorporating some of that language into their code, actually. In their shoreline master program. I wanted, I don't have exact language, but and I could work on that. I'd like to propose kind of companion policy with that six point three. That gets specific about basically waterfront lighting. And not a, you know, not proposing a regulation, but rather that the city should kind of lean into that topic. Promote it, understand it, and see if there's some uh room there for us to provide some incentives for homeowners and guidance. to minimize the impact of our waterfront lighting on. So I'd like to see that added as a as a companion, maybe it's six point, you know, six point something three B.
Christina, do you have any comments around that?
I as long as everybody else feels good about adding this, I'm happy to to do a little research and draft some policy language. I can insert it right after the dark skies policy and just renumber the rest of section six. No problem at all. And then we can also talk a little bit more about implementation. Yes.
I was just gonna say I can forward some material and I could take a stab at language and I'll just send that to you through Mark and Maddie or whatever. I'm happy to do that. I just didn't have the time to wordsmith, so.
Sure. Yeah. That would be fantastic.
Any other comments on on that piece?
I'll just chime in. I I thought this was great. You know, I really, I really liked. This is a great segment. One thing that I thought was missing and maybe maybe isn't, but I would love to see something just about like trash pickup or just like I don't know if that fits under environmental quality. And I know that our our city, we actually do a really good job, I think, but just something that and again, I I should have decided where it would be and what the language would be, but just supporting, I I know that there are groups that already do it, so just maybe supporting them or acknowledging them or and just encouraging
Christina, have you seen language around trash or where that might be added? I mean, it seems natural that it would fall within this section.
So I I do want to clarify, we're focused on picking up like litter, right?
Yes.
In in public spaces. Yeah, I can. I'm not immediately thinking of any examples, but I I can, I can look for a couple. I do think that it's a a natural fit in here related to like maintenance, maintenance of of publicly owned spaces like parks and rights of way and encouraging litter cleanup in private properties as well. And then we can also talk about how that could be implemented with like communication programs or you know, potentially through development regulations for certain kinds of commercial development. And if that's like a conditional conditional approval kind of tag on. There are a lot of ways that that could be implemented that I can think of off the top of my head. So, yeah.
I love that idea. That's great. Everybody else? Thumbs thumbs up. You two online thumbs up, thumbs up. Cool. Any other comments on these discussion topics or any feedback or shall we move on?
I'm sorry, Lois. Okay, I I do see that there's some it comes way back between using the word conserve and preserve. And I'm wondering if we can clarify or we can like, are we conserving or we preserving in certain areas that I can send those, I I didn't have an opportunity to send some of my comments over to you, Maddie. So I do have areas where I pointed that out.
So you want more consistent?
Yeah. Because there is a difference between words conserve and preserve. Preserves typically looking at architecture or 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 buildings that will preserve conserve is more about environment. And then I noticed so on page number thirty five, it's a background analysis. I I I know that this, you know, some of this language has been here for a while, but I'm wondering if this is a place. So when we're talking about ecosystem and green infrastructure that provided are provided by the natural environment, but create economic benefit for citizens. Gosh, it's been a while since I've looked at my comments, but I'm just wondering if you want to add something about climate resilience here? If this is something that we want to point out. Actually, let me think about that for a moment because I've I've got my notes here, but they're not making sense at this point.
It is likely that we will revisit that topic when we start talking about climate next month.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Let's see. And then my question about climate or about environmental quality and climate change or whatever we're going, however we're going to address it. What's the difference? Are we making distinction between climate? Change or what? How are we going to address climate? The climate, right? And equal environment equality, is there? Are we keeping these these subjects distinct?
So it's a, that's a great question. When, so a- as you all know, Lake Forest Park has been working on a climate action plan on its own initiative because all things related to climate and environment are very important to kind of the the character and spirit of the community. At the same time, we now have a new legislative requirement to adopt a climate element. And there are some specifics associated with that requirement. So in particular, each jurisdiction must adopt, well, each Lake Forest Park in must adopt both a resilience sub element and a greenhouse gas emission sub element that respond to some specific criteria that are put together by the the Department of Commerce. We'll talk more about that next month. There's also the expectation that climate planning gets integrated in other elements. This is not a required element, so this is not a place where climate planning needs to be integrated. However, the Climate Action Plan talks a little bit about about the environment. Right? There are a lot of environmental benefits and there are a lot of you know, interrelationships between some of the environmental policies and some of the the especially resilience policies that are have already been highlighted in here. I think that the greenhouse gas emissions reduction policies, I mean, we could consider some like sequestration stuff that might appear here, but I think the bulk of those policies are likely going to be related to building energy usage and vehicle like personal vehicle usage. So maybe a little bit less in the section. We can interweave them throughout without really keeping them separate or we can't, we we will have the opportunity to to kind of compartmentalize them within like their own goal or or a couple of goals. I think that how how that comes together is not clear quite yet. We're gonna have a meeting with the Climate Action Committee next month to talk a little bit about where everything should fit. And then we'll also be doing a substantial amount of work to fulfill the requirements of the climate element separately through the middle of next year. So, long story short, not not sure yet the best way to treat it, but we'll we're we'll figure it out kind of as we as we go.
I I view it as get what you need with the minimum mandates by December, then make it better, then make it better.
Yeah.
David, did I hear that you might send your recommendations on?
Yeah, yeah, if that's still. If I can still do that, Maddie, would you mind if I go ahead and send them over? Some of these comments that I haven't been, I just wasn't able to.
You're on mute.
Uh, please. Yeah, I'm glad to continue to update the document. The only reason I didn't send it out to everyone is that I remember the whole public thing and I thought maybe Mark could send it. But David, if you're gonna send those soon, then Mark, I can update them and send them over to you so everything continues to be in one place.
Right, yeah, please do.
And then. Oh, yeah, I just wanted to say, yeah, that that would be a good thing, A, just to finish with David to send out because I think that Lois, you had a lot of feedback on some just language changes, some of them subtle, none of them super sweeping. So I think that I had just sent a note to Christina saying, you know, I think they're all pretty straightforward, whatever jives, pick it up, whatever doesn't, or that you need to push back to please do. And otherwise, we can you know, look at, you know, the next round of edits for this section, you know, since we have put a pin in a couple of things. But just to like for us to be on track, I did want to respond directly to Christina's questions about these discussion topics. And if if we're done with the previous topic, I'd love to just answer some of those directly from my perspective. Is that okay? Okay. So your question about incorporating resilience, there was this question of whether or not to take EQ four and and combine it with EQ ten. And I would say if the cat, if if the overall section is about all resilience, that would be great. The way you framed it in the discussion left me feeling like like there was this heavier emphasis on resilience in the face of climate versus, you know, broader resilience. So I don't mind collapsing you know, the hazard mitigation and climate resilience into one resilience section. Let's just kind of more administrative. On the wildlife, I thought collapsing them the way you did worked. And on the climate commitment, I was a little bit confused about EQ nine and then the placeholder you have for EQ ten, like what distinguishes those two sections? Particularly if we're also going to have climate resilience elements in a resilience category. But the only one of your questions that I thought were challenging is I could see where you put some sort of policy statements in that seem to speak to your equity item, item number two. But I would say by and large, you know, a lot of my comments have just been like, are there best practices somewhere? Are there model policies? Because I think it's it's sort of mushy to understand exactly what that looks like. And so I appreciate the policies you have included that sort of speak to equity, but I I it feels like our group maybe needs a little more. I don't know, background information or exposure in order to be able to truly tackle that equity discussion question you laid out. And that's just, that's my input on your question at hand.
Thank you, Maddie.
To chime in on the discussion questions, Christina, I'm with Maddie on one, three and four. And on equity, you know, yes, for the discussion would be good, but I also wanted to directly respond to two A. Should equity be a primary decision factor in considering where environmentally related public investments are made? I think strongly, yes, and we should have kind of a policy goal around that. I think we as a group have talked about that a couple of times. And I think that's really important when we look at pre canopy coverage and the areas that have a lot and the areas that don't, and they tend to correspond with perhaps you know, intersectionality with some of the communities that are underprivileged or perhaps lower resourced based on the data that you provided. So I think that should be a policy goal. And if there is, you know, some model language or some best practice around that, that would be great. Related to the prior page on page twenty eight, where you have a few considerations. You had that last consideration to prioritize equity and the preservation enhancement of forest canopy. And then updates the community forest management plan. And I think we should do that.
I mean, I would have loved to have seen your comments, quite honestly, as well.
That those were the comments. That was it. I I sent it to Matt and I said, I basically went, yes, by this one, yes, we should do this.
We'll send those out to you, Lois, but Yanni represented his and and Sam has represented his. Well, they were, you know, pretty limited. And I was able to pull all of your comments into this document too. So Christina has everything that's been said tonight and all of your feedback was incorporated. So you haven't missed a lot.
I make one comment on the equity front real quick, just that I raised this at a prior meeting and I'm just trying to figure out where it fits in that. I was pointing out that especially in Southern Gateway, there are, there are no parks and open spaces. There just aren't. Unless you go play in the cemetery, right? And which is inappropriate. So I'm just curious, I mean, I and I think that is a serious equity issue that we don't have open space, but it's also, it's both a health and environmental quality issue and it's a parks and open space issue. So I'm just struggling with do we want to name that in both places in some way or where does it belong? So I don't know what the, I don't know what the answer is. I just wanted to flag that again because I think it's something we should be we should be think thoughtful about.
I I I really appreciate that comment. And actually, Maddie, I feel that you've kind of brushed my comments under the rug by saying that they weren't very significant. But it actually speaks largely to this very issue. And we we all know that that Southern Gateway is kind of the area that is lacking the green Rendies resource. There, I mean, we we all know that. And I think that that in terms of equity, this document should reflect as much as possible throughout our our understanding that that is a denuded area. What you were speaking of that to to revitalize it really is to greenify it, to create buffers against six lanes of high speed traffic. And my comments are really directed towards, you know, focusing on on greenifying and creating buffers, especially in that area. And and you know, I know we had discussions about my incorrect use of of tree canopy, but the spirit of what I'm trying to say is that that area has to be greened and 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 provide access for pedestrians who may not have cars. We do need, the other comment I made in regards to this is that we need some sort of electric vehicle infrastructure so that there, you know, people who do have electric vehicles can also have you know, access to that throughout the city. So I know I'm jumping around, but there's you know, to Yanni's point, you know, I I think that this area my points really did try to try to stress how we can greenify and how we can create more pedestrian access way. And equity in, you know, the the fact that there are the has and has nots within our city. And it really is about you know, about that area as well. It's lacking in in that document. So I hope you can appreciate that.
Well, please let me respond. I if I use the word insignificant, I deeply apologize. I don't I don't recall that that's what I said, but if I did, I apologize. What I was saying or what my intention was behind the comment I did make was that your comments were really straightforward and they were solid and they don't, I don't, I don't think, you know, as as we see the edits that Christina puts together, I don't think most of us would disagree that they were they represent the values and the vision that we have. That's that's all I intended to say. You took a lot of time to provide feedback and careful input on some vocabulary changes and to prop up areas that were more vague and they're not insignificant. They're just, they're probably just not super arguable. They're probably not going to be hot issues. And so I was trying to you know, make sure we had enough time for new material.
So new.
Just one comment. I wanted to kind of echoing what Lois and Yanni have said. I think, you know, Yanni, they can be at both places. And I think they are separate issues because we've talked here about the money we hopefully will be getting from Sound Transit to offset all the trees they're cutting down. And how we distribute those is an investment that the city will be making, how we distribute those resources. And so equity ought to be a guiding principle in regreening parts of the town and coming up with thoughtful approaches, doing that, that fits in this section. So to answer question two A, I could think that's important. And I think you capture the policy here. And then it's the issue and the facility and the analysis of how to step later. And it's not just one space. But you can also augment it if it's predominantly one space, you can, you can raise the issue. But the way I've heard it is citywide, wherever that issue exists for that particular.
I I think this document really has to have strong, a strong messaging throughout it though in the EQ, in the land use that, you know, STP, if Sound Transit does come through, that's the area that will be affected and we will have no, no stick really, if you will, to protect that area, which is already a vulnerable area. That's the area that will be affected, and we will have no, no stick really, if you will, to protect that area, which is already a a vulnerable area. And really, this document, I I think to have that consistency throughout the land use component, throughout the uh the environmental body to really uh hit home that that uh, you know, we have to safeguard this vulnerable area. I think it's really important to show that throughout, and it does hit on um, you know, I think the equity issue. Uh I did mention, uh you know, I think the shoreline area too um with the drainage, but uh there should be verbiage that connects um, you know, our shoreline, everything drains into Lake Washington, and so um also considering the fact that that the city is connected, I think that's an important EQ to to mention the shoreline app. Uh the shoreline component, which is uh there is, oh, sorry. I'm a little flustered. I am this close to leaving the commission, ladies and gentlemen, so that's why you'll have to excuse me, because uh this is a volunteer for me, and I just so feel so passionately that this document is really to, you know, a safeguard um that area for us in order to live and fall, and I apologize if I've offended anybody. Uh but uh I assure you, I have better things to do with my time as well. But I I I'm sorry with that, you know, act- actually, I do think that I will have to recuse myself, and I best of luck, I I feel that this is a Maddie show, and so Maddie, take it away.
Oh, you mean tonight? I thought you meant after.
Joe, I think I'm done, you guys. I think I'm done, but I think I've said my piece and uh and sorry it's with drama, but good, continue, uh, good luck with everything. Please continue, yeah, there's still a form, so. But those are my only comments, and I wish everybody all the best, so thank you. And I do hope it doesn't turn blighted. Good luck, yeah.
I have a comment on wildlife. When we're ready to go there.
Yeah, do do we need to go back backtrack uh to your comment that you had about where we might want to add that language into safeguard this Southern Gateway, or is Christina, you have, go ahead.
I might look to Christina to maybe suggest something where that might fit in here, or and I I really appreciate what Sam said, that it's probably needs to be in a few places in the open space section and here. Um I can also give it some more thought. Okay. Um so I don't have a sharp suggestion, but I'd just like to
It's a good call.
Find it in here somewhere.
Yeah, so they call out uh Christina, do you have uh is that kind of enough runway for you that maybe you might be able to think how it could be incorporated in the section? Knowing that that's a uh an issue that that we all are in agreement should be reflected somewhere.
Yeah, I'll um, I'll find a good home for that and uh have something ready for our next meeting.
Cool, thank you. I heard you have some comments on.
Yeah, I wanted to make one comment about the, it's EQ eight, and I did.
Maybe could we you know, do something like make a recommendation that council or something to prioritize in, I don't know, I'm sorry.
You want to put like a finer point on that?
Never mind, I'm sorry, I'll I'll maybe I'll.
No, it's okay, I'll be thinking, thank you, come out right there.
Um so what I was gonna suggest is on, is a little bit of a different uh moving on, I think. Um and I sent uh a written comment to Maddie about this. Um mainly it was showing up in the background, the volume two around wildlife. And what struck me is that there's, we list a bunch of plans that inform inform this uh chapter, and I was just struck that one that's missing is the Cedar River Lake, Washington Lakes and Mammoth Salmon Conservation Plan, which the city has been a signatory to developing that plan since two thousand and one. Uh Councilmember Phillips used to chair the council that developed the latest update of that plan. And I know that in the King County Comprehensive Plan, the county specifically calls out that we use that as a guiding document around stream restoration and river help and things like that. So um I'd like to see it added in the background um section as a, just a really key guiding document, because it really does provide a lot of recommendations for how streams like the ones we have in this city can be made healthier and the lake shore. Um and then, and I'm gonna do what I said earlier with the other one, I would propose also a policy under EQ eight to just, just name that. But if I think about our land acknowledgement to the tribes and how important the streams and salmon recovery is to the tribes, I find we're a little, I think we're too thin on that here. I think we have these amazing stream assets. Let's name it that we want to make those as healthy as we can, um you know, for salmon, according to a plan that we've helped write. You know, I mean, the city's been very active. So um I will send language if if folks accept my 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 suggestion on that count, um I think it's pretty important.
Sure, you Maddie, you guys have any comments on that? Run agreement, or you like that?
Yeah, I I'm in agreement.
Great, I will draft something, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Thanks, Yanni.
Any other comments on environmental quality? All right, Christine, I think we're ready to move on to community service and public safety.
Okay, um thank you so much for the feedback, uh and I'll look forward to uh follow-up uh notes and suggestions. Um all right, so community services and public safety. This is another element that's not required. This is something that Lake Forest Park uh chose to do. Uh so there are no specific requirements under the Growth Management Act that we need to address in this element. There are some relevant countywide planning policies uh that are, that are from uh the most recent update of the King County CPPs, uh especially those that um as as the CPPs thematically are focused on equity and elevating public health. Um so there are some basic requirements to provide an urban level of service uh in urban areas like Lake Forest Park uh and to coordinate with King County um or others in the region to support human and community services that meet the needs of future residents. Um generally speaking, your element already does this. Um but we could clarify and emphasize on providing equitable planning, funding and delivery of services. And I think you'll see that reflected in the suggestions that we've made. Um uh right now, um the the element focuses on making services kind of equally available, uh but we can, we can do more to respond directly to the needs in the community versus uh just kind of having services available and expecting people to be able to access them. There are also some relevant policies in PSRC's Vision twenty fifty that we think can go here. Uh so some, some requirements that we saw are protecting uh protecting and enhancing the environment and public health and safety while you're providing services uh or citing new facilities. Uh promoting the affordability and equitable access of public service to all communities, especially those who have historically been underserved. There's also uh, this is kind of similar to one of the questions that we had just addressed related to environmental quality, which is um you know, considering how we can prioritize investments to elevate equity in in the, in this case, in the delivery of these kinds of services. And then considering the impacts of climate change and citing or providing public services and facilities, integrating resilience into public services uh and locating community facilities and health and human services near transit facilities so that uh people can access them more conveniently. One thing that I do want to point out here on this slide is that a lot of these policies talk about both facilities and services. We'll talk more about facilities when we get into the capital facilities and utilities elements. Um so we're, when we're looking at complying with these policies, we're really looking at um just the public services side. Uh there are also facilities, some some interrelatedness with facilities, because a lot of these services are offered like from a facility, for example. But just uh to be aware of that distinction and nuances as we go forward. Um so what you're looking at tonight in terms of our recommended revisions are some changes, again, to improve equity outcomes. You'll see updates to word choice, some new policies and the elevation of some policies to all level, uh just to kind of really emphasize uh the importance of equity as we're, as we are delivering community services. Um clarification of some policies to be more consistent with the CPPs and Vision twenty fifty, uh eliminating some redundant policies. Oh, never mind, uh you can tell that I uh copied, copied the slide, uh disregard redundant policies, consolidating goals. But yes, we did also add a placeholder for some climate planning related work, uh specifically the resilience, uh social resilience category on there. Um and then we also made some clarifications and equity-focused uh word choice updates. Uh but we uh again, um we we didn't have time to pull all of the new data about crime rates uh and response times, so we still need to coordinate uh with um the police department on those two pieces to get updated information. I um similar with the environmental quality, I'm not expecting dramatic changes in those figures. Uh and so we are um pretty confident in moving forward with our recommended policy updates. Uh so I will once again refer you to the discussion guide for this element. So the first, uh the first question is how we want to incorporate resilience. Let me discussion guide copy. So uh we, we absolutely will do this more in the full climate element uh planning process, but for the purposes of getting to the end of this year and addressing the Climate Action Plan and kind of expanding some of the uh some of the policies that are already present. What question that I had was, um should we at this point be preparing additional policies to address uh social cohesion as a way of improving community resilience, or is that something that we prefer to to tackle fully uh when we're doing the the climate planning? Uh or the full climate element, the climate resilience sub-element. Um and then the second, uh the the second suggestion uh that I had was uh on the equity topic reviewing very carefully, h- uh how um how our new suggestions really elevate certain commitments that the city is is kind of representing uh through the adoption of these kinds of goals and policies. Um so with that, I will turn it over to general discussion.
Anyone want to kick it off with comments?
I don't have uh comments really to the discussion, but some of the policy, I really, really liked how there were a couple of things that um you mentioned, supporting existing community-based organizations, because honestly, the first time that I read through this document way back when, I thought, oh my goodness, there's so much for the city to do. When there are probably other people, you know, communities, church, you know, groups, churches doing similar things, and we should support them. And so I love, I I think that there could even be more of that language, and I would love to see, and I would be happy to participate in this, is go around and find out what nonprofits, churches, what you know, people in the community are already doing, and then having like a link to a page like you know, if you need homeless support, if you need food resources, if you need, you know, uh you know, emotional support, whatever, that we could have a page of people in the community that are already participating in those kinds of things, because you know, I mean, the city has so much on its plate, uh so I think uh anyway, doing that's something that I really liked, so thank you. One thing I I um would like Policy CS three six um to go back to its original word, uh facilitate opportunities for positive interaction between youth and police and other public authorities to support safe and positive interactions with local youth. I just, I I I think the way it's changed, changes the meaning completely, and I know that the police department, you know, they do things like the toy drive and, you know, reaching out to interacting with kids and I thought that this um, I just didn't, I thought that the new language doesn't capture that, and I think that the um and I I would like to see it go back to its original language.
I would very much support that as well.
That was page twenty five eighty nine, uh like on the little box at the bottom. CS three six.
Okay, yeah.
Online, are you both able to find that page sixty nine, towards the bottom, CS three six? And the comment is to go back to the original language. Uh so basically eliminate the de-escalation training for the police. I'm in support of that as well. Are there any thoughts on that?
I I actually like the new and the old, because I I agree with you, they're different. So I, I I don't mind the addition, but I I would support keeping the old one as 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 well.
Yeah, I I like them both, so I didn't, I don't have a problem with keeping the old one.
It's something adding, adding in a new one in there, separating the two.
Do you, do you think that this is the place for that kind of language? Are there other places where, you know, police training is uh
I think it's a, like, it's an okay place for it, especially given kind of the other things that are around it, around youth. Um you know, I I wish we didn't need to make that recommendation, but I think we actually do. I think it's a good one to add. So maybe there's a better place, but if we don't think of a better one, I would put it here.
What about, you know, finding out or talking to the police department if that's already something that they do, you know, um I'm sure they have all training, so I just didn't know if this is any.
Sam, please.
I I also think they're separate topics, and I would support having two, uh because I think we do lose something with the change, but I do think that the de-escalation training should be called out, it's appropriate to be in this goal. I don't think it's tied to youth, so um I think it's for the whole community, I'm sure it's about equity for the whole community, so I would make de-escalation policy goal, something that is writ large. And I will, and I'm not a minority, uh so I don't have those experiences with police where I'm worried that that's going to threaten my life, but I will say the one experience I had with a police officer that has most resonated with me, that was negative, was in this town with the Lake Forest Park Police Officer who escalated something that did not need to be escalated. When my husband was coming home late from teaching at the high school. He got off on five twenty-two there where the bus dropped him off, the light was broken, he couldn't cross the street. And we waited three cycles in the rain, so eventually, when it was safe to cross, he crossed at the intersection. And a police officer from Lake Forest Park came up and made a big scene out of it, talking condescendingly, escalating, insinuating that me walking up as my husband to meet him was trying to pull a gun on him. It was totally ridiculous, and it conveyed to me that that police officer, if he had any escal- de-escalation training, seriously hadn't got through, gone through it. So I think it's a goal that's worthwhile to include here, based on my experience with Lake Forest Park Police Officers. So I I do wonder if there is a different way to name what that is, though, as opposed to de-escalation. I think that that has a negative connotation.
That is the industry term for it, so. Yeah, that's, that's the, that's the term for that, the kind of training um that that Sam is particularly speaking of. That policy could find a home in goal CS seven. Um and we can, we can make some adjustments uh and and polish that language a little bit further. Um just to to really explain that you know, we're, we're expanding the toolkit for police um and and keep it in a positive light.
I would very much like to keep it in a positive light, because you know, I really appreciate. I would very much like to keep it in a positive light because, you know, I really appreciate those men. Put on the uniform every day and protect us. And I want to really encourage them.
Agreed. Totally agreed. And to your point says, if that, I don't hear you arguing that, right?
Sure, sure. And yeah, I also, you know, disciplinary things have to happen and I think I should, but.
So we'll revert back to the prior language on that one element. You'll add a new one in and CS seven for public safety. That has the language of de-escalation.
Yes.
It is what standard is. Okay.
Could we just back up for just a moment to your, Christine, to your questions?
Yes.
I want some clarification. Your discussion question number one, and, and actually I'd like to hear from all of you of what you think. It means to have social cohesion.
So. Do, would you like me to start or would, do you want to have your discussion? First.
Hopefully Christina starts.
Please Christina.
Okay, yeah, so there's, there's a really strong correlation to ha- between having a strong social network. In a community and its ability to respond to and successfully recover from. Any kind of disaster situation, right? So when we're talking about. Resilience in a, in a social way, we're talking about really building those community bonds. So this, we're talking about places where, where people know each other, where people are really friendly, where people just. Have, have those opportunities to, to. Connect with their neighbors and to, to really build that strong social fabric. That helps, you know, for, for example, let's say we had an earthquake and services are disrupted. People are more likely to check on their neighbors or pull together resources to, to move beyond the initial emergency. And into full recovery and to be recovering more successfully. So when we're talking about social cohesion, we're talking about building, building that social network and really strengthening those community bonds. And I'm happy to phrase it in a different way. If, if social cohesion doesn't make sense, or it feels like we're looking for like. You know, too, too much merging or, or anything like that. But the, the spirit of that is to, is to really, really protect and enhance the connections that are already so. Obvious in the community and continue to focus on ways to build those connections between people, between neighbors over time.
Is that how you're understanding that term?
Well, I, I like that you are making a connection to resilience. In talking about cohesion, talking about social cohesion, that makes sense. And it, and I think it gives us a lens, it's to. To, to look at the, the feedback that Christina's given to us in these, in these comments and I, I think in a different way.
And this is something that we'll talk about in. Going through the, the resilience sub element of the climate element. So there's a, there's a specific process that Commerce has outlined that we'll be following. For that, and we will talk about it at that point, but we can potentially front load some of that since I know that. I mean, it's something that, that. Is just very obviously a hallmark of the Lake Forest Park community. I remember very, very clearly a lot of discussions about the value of places like Third Place Commons. Because of this opportunity to network with your neighbors and to, to really reinforce those social bonds for, for people that live in the city. So there's an opportunity to do it now, to build on the work that the, the Climate Action Committee has done. But we'll definitely take care of it later as well in the planning process. So I don't want to think, anybody to think that if we don't do it now, we're not doing it. But we, we can do it now and/or later.
Thank you.
So, so really. So Christina, I really liked how you expanded that for us. When I thought of cohesion, I was just thinking of just getting along with your neighbors. So I wasn't thinking of building a relationship or anything like that. So thank you.
Any other comments on the community service public safety elements? Maddie, how about you? Anything?
Um, nothing huge. I mean, mine are just in, you know, minor comments. I don't know if they're discussion worthy, but you know, like it was more just wordsmithing type feedback. I, I think you did a really solid job, Christina.
Thank you.
Yeah, you took a lot of the create and start and turned them into maintain support like Meredith shared. So that's great.
Curious if you re-encountered the thought you had.
There's so much to do.
Look forward, before we leave this topic.
No, well, that I was, I was just, no.
There's plenty of time we have all here.
Just reflecting on what you just shared Christina, one, I guess, like I had a little bit of a. I had a little bit of a weird, like, what, what did she mean by the cohesion when I first read this? I appreciate how you explained it. To me, it almost feels like. There could be a little bit of that in the, in the narrative to this section, introduction to this section that, you know, one element. That really contributes to resilience and it's safety and things like that are social cohesion. And these policies that follow are partly intended to get us there, right? It's about social cohesion and support for seniors, youth, so forth. So I think instead of like a policy about cohesion, that feels kind of weird to me. But I think if it was more of a, you know, kind of a something up here in the intro, you know, narratives are pretty short to just say that's. Part of what we're trying to accomplish with this set of policies that we list. I don't know if that resonates with people. I'm just, I really like the concept and I'm a little wary of here's a policy on cohesion. That seems weird.
But some good feedback. Thank you. Yeah, I, upon reflection, maybe that wasn't the best phrase. So I can definitely look for some, some alternatives to that and I'm happy to add some explanatory statements as well.
The way that you explained it to all of us, it was very, it was very understandable and it's very eloquently stated. So I do think that was a great call out when you asked what, what we meant by that, what should I put that? It could go a couple of ways. So that'd be great.
Great.
Now, I'll just say, having looked at plenty of comprehensive plans, our narratives are extremely short. So, you know, a few sentences more aren't going to hurt us if it helps us describe what the section is about.
A few thousand.
Well, a lot of other jurisdictions put all their background analysis into the narrative and then do goals and policies. And you guys have yours really, you know, clearly separated into two volumes, which makes it infinitely more readable on like a day to day basis for like policy reference. So I like, I like the LFP approach.
Immediately when you, when you described what you meant by cohesion, I thought of the National Night Out, which is, you know, when all the neighbors get together. And, you know, when the police department comes and interacts with us. So that is one, you know, even the city encouraging people to have, you know, barbecues and things with their neighbors. So I, I could definitely see a. Something from that. Even, even, you know, the events that we have at the, and Lake Forest Park. And you know, there's lots of ways that our city really values that cohesion.
The address of climate change is a play for people to come together eventually. Where it's very dire effects.
Any other comments on this section? We ready to transition. How are we? Time wise, we have twenty minutes?
Pretty good. Eight thirty nine.
Eight thirty nine, okay. Christina, do you have anything else?
Uh, I do. So I, I'm, I'm actually, I'm done with slides. The last one is the discussion slide, my usual Q and A slide at the end. I did want to share some updates related to climate planning kind of generally. So there've been some moving pieces and just wanted to update you all on, on where things are at. So Mark and I did meet with, with Sarah and some of the other members of the Climate Action Committee. And have really started coordinating and put together a plan for moving forward. We are going to speak with them at our March fifth meeting. I was really hoping that the timing would work out where we would speak to them, get some consensus on. Our approach to incorporating the climate action plan and then come to you guys for special meeting content later that week. But it sounds like if your special meeting is on the fourth and the timing's not quite what I would hope. Won't, won't exactly make that plan functional for you guys to discuss. But I will be sharing some information with you following the meeting with the Climate Action Committee. So, so look for that. It's going to be, broadly speaking, a, a summary of the policies that are in the current draft of the Climate Action Plan. And kind of tag on where we think those should go in the elements of the comprehensive plan. The other big piece of news that Mark has probably already shared with you is that we were, the city was awarded. A $500,000 grant to do the full climate element. Which is why our approach to climate planning has pivoted a little bit. That's an application that we submitted back in October and we were finally notified that the city was awarded that grant. And so that's going to enable the city to get a really. An, an early start on this climate element compared to when the city would normally have to adopt it. But because of the timing of the award, the planning process for that climate element is going to be offset just a little bit. From the rest of the comprehensive plan. There's a, a pretty detailed approach that Commerce expects the climate element to follow for both the resilience sub element and for the greenhouse gas emissions sub element. So we'll be working through that kind of in parallel with the intent to adopt the climate element as an amendment to the comp plan in next year's docket. So short term, i.e. by the end of this year, we're going to be adapting the Climate Action Plan. And getting set up for fully incorporating the climate element. And then by June thirtieth, we will have finished the, the full climate element to, to be ready for adoption. So. Look forward to hearing more about climate. What? What was that, Mark?
Year, yeah, June twenty twenty five.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Did I say, yeah, June next year, June twenty twenty five. That's, sorry. Nobody panicked. I'm panicking. Yeah, the, the other thing, no, I think that's it. I just really wanted to, to give you the update on climate. Yeah, I think that's it.
And then just to add, we did a similar thing at the tree board. And their discussion was that there may be existing policies that they support in the comp plan. We'll pull those out and have that discussion. And then as we go forward, this burning augment those were in whichever element they follow. And some of the questions that I thought about the tree board or if they don't be related to tree board can be answered by the. Tree board, yes. So there, there, we're, we're trying to grab all the groups and speak as one in this draft.
Any questions for Christina or closing thoughts for those pieces? On to new business. It's the last document in the attachment, page seventy eight. Twenty four planning commission work plan. I don't know if you have any specific comments, but it's basically just says we're doing it all this year.
Exactly. What you're doing tonight is essentially the work plan. But I will, and so we don't need anything as far as adding to it. The city council will, will consider all the work plans in the coming meetings. This one is pretty straightforward. So I'd like to bring it. To, where's my note? Anyway, to city council and House of the Blessed, understand that I'm giving a presentation on comp plan. Procedure status very briefly on the twenty second. And then the Blessed work plan. But just to keep you fully informed. As the comp plan moves from planning commission to city council, and there's still some touches with that. Sign ordinance amendments, I have to revisit, see if that stays at city council and commerce. Or some questions come back and then wireless ordinance amendments. And those are the nodes right now. As we get further into comp plan, the obligation for the city is also to adopt implementing development code. So the two that are specific are critical areas ordinance and the shoreline management plan. So those will, those will closely follow as we go into next year as well as bill eleven ten. Specific development regulations. So there's a lot of work. Front loaded with comp plan, this work plan works for us, it's planning. Get that blessed and then try and force it, give you as, as much warning of what comes next. Then see how much bandwidth everybody has.
Sounds good.
That's the plan.
Wow, your official comment. Wow. Maddie, create anything?
Yeah, no, I was just going to say, I, so I don't have the, sorry, I don't have the document for tonight in front of me. But did you, is the work plan for, for this year in Knight's document?
Yeah, it's the last.
Okay, last page. So I, I was thinking, do we, do we, I'm thinking of years past Ashton and. I feel like, do we have to vote like officially? Do we have to vote and approve our work plan? Or do we simply want to look at it and discuss it at our next meeting with any modifications? I know we've, we've had those discussions in the past. Do we need to take official action?
No, it's, it's encouraged. If there's no changes or issues, comp plan is a big effort. So it's certainly understandable that your twenty twenty four work plan would be that. Because there's a lot of unknowns too, as we get through the year. The big deadline for grants and, and, and the work that you do is the recommendation. And then close out the year so that the city has a draft. And so adding to it is not really needed, but it can be. The work plans do not need to go straight to council right away. For instance, tree board won't be until. Later in March, whenever they're ready. They're taking the opportunity to review and augment and then suggest. So it's not quite as simple for them and they're going to take that opportunity. But if you agree with the work plan and then comp plan, you could certainly tonight. Reach a consensus that that's it and I'm willing to bring this work plan to city council. And then that allows us to focus on, on that work specifically.
Does anyone, yeah, Sam.
I'll just chime in on that. And Maddie, I don't know if you had it in front of you or if you noticed it kind of.
I'm going to pull it up, yeah.
It's very short. It basically says a hundred percent of our focus for the rest of the year is going to be on the comp plan update, which seems about right. And then Mark has some bullets under it, you know, reviewing the planned update, hosting public engagement activities coordinated with city council and other advisory boards. Reviewing the consultant drafts of the housing plan and updates and then recommend updates to council. Those seem like the big rocks to me and I'm personally not in favor of adding other things other than the comp plan to our work plan for twenty twenty four. I think we'll have a full link.
And didn't we go through, I thought we, I thought we did that before we kind of embarked on this. So I think right before you two had joined, but we had. Agreed that our year was going to be dedicated to the comp plan and we wouldn't really have the bandwidth for anything else. So this does reflect what we talked about. I don't have any changes. Does anybody else have any changes? Want to add in fifty bullet points on it? Do, if not.
Party on, right?
Yeah, yeah, party on.
Yeah, no, I, my only question was like whether we like needed to take official action and whether it accounted for like. That, that will be, I, I mean, my understanding is we'll turn this over before the end of the year. And so how do we account for? Like I, we'll roll right into code revisions. Does it matter? Like, do we need to distinguish that here that like this is going to be like eighty percent of our effort? And by the time we get to like September, October, we're working on code that. And by the time we get to like September, October, we're working on code that.
Flexibility, but what, uh, to meet the procedures and policies manuals and so forth. At the beginning of each year, each commission board body needs to have an adopted work plan. So that's all we're trying to achieve right now without scaring you as well.
Okay, that sounds good. Yeah, sorry. I had just closed that document, so I was getting caught up. Yeah.
But, uh, and the procedure wise, it's not that formal. What I'd like to say when this goes to city council is you blessed it. This, you know, this is your work one.
Let's, let's do that. Is that, um, somebody wanna move to approve this?
So move.
Move second, awesome. Second, all in favor?
Thank you, thank you. And it, uh, well, I'll stop talking. I've been talking all day. At least flexibility for the unknowns. You know, we're heading to December. Who knows how we're gonna do. Um, and I don't think the, uh, the other commissioners joined us tonight, but just to call that out.
Okay. Election of planning commission chair and vice chair. Maddie, do you have some comments around this?
Um, no, I'm super excited to see who wants to, um, you know, who would be willing to chair and, uh. Vice chair our group.
And a little staff background, I added this purely out of procedure.
Yeah, February is when we do this. Yep, that's exactly right.
Similar to the work plan, it's an annual requirement. We just need to be able to say we did it as a group. But by adding it to the agenda, there's been no conversations about change or any of that. So, um, it's mainly procedural for staff.
Well, and also, Mark, you weren't here last February, but we were, you guys jump in and correct me, but we were. Holding, uh, you know, a, um, election, uh, for, um, a new chair and vice chair. And I can't remember why that got sort of suspended, but, um, I think everybody here.
Yeah.
No.
We had people leaving and new people coming, and so we wanted to.
Maddie, after I joined, I know it was an agenda topic after I joined, which.
Anyway, yes, we're familiar with this, but, um, we, we were pretty excited to, um, do that. And then I don't remember why it changed. But, um, yeah, that's all I would wanna say about it, Ashton, is, um, is like, let's do it.
Everyone's jumping up.
Well, I mean, procedurally, can we nominate, um. People that we would like to nominate for the chair position?
I'm much less formal at planning commission than city council, but at city council, they go through the steps. Leave the, the, the opportunity for a nomination unflexible, even a self nomination. Just as. The, the continuity is the most important for me.
Right.
This is a two-year process that continuity has to be there. Um, but, and somebody has to be very comfortable. We need to get to next December. So to me, that's really what matters, but I leave it to you. I've been here five weeks, so I'm not sure.
Well, I guess I have a question, cause I, I know that, like, Maddie, your term, and I thought somebody else too, got sort of extended. So that you stay with us through the comp plan.
Yeah, and that's what I heard.
Does that, does that affect this, this, I mean, could we not made to keep, I mean, can we not make to keep the same chair until? They have to step off, or do we need to choose a new chair? That's.
No, uh, Lois and, Lois and I are rotating off, um, technically this month, but we were both asked by. Uh, the mayor to stay on to the clamp. Through the comp planning process. And typically when that's happened in the past, it's for, it's really for another term. So I'm not sure when the end date will be. Um, but I do, I do wanna say, I think in, unless. Uh, you all feel very differently. Um, I've been chair for a while and it's been an honor. But I also know there's some really capable folks amongst us. Um, and, um, I think public record will. Uh, reveal that I nominated several of you, so, um, I, I would love to give somebody else another opportunity to be in this seat. I'm, I'm going on a third term, which is past what the rules say and, uh, have been chair for, I don't even know how long now. So, so if, if it, if it pleases you, I would really welcome a nomination from, um. I mean, I, I have a nomination. I'm gonna be quiet. I'd like to see what you guys would like to do, because I, I know who I'd like to nominate.
Well, look, Maddie, let me just say at this point, you've been the chair for as long as I've been on the commission and I really appreciated your leadership. And Ashton has also done an awesome job. So you guys have really done a great job. And Maddie, I know that you put in extra hours outside of what we've done to, you know, come up with the, um, agendas and things like that. So thank you for that time.
I haven't seen that one. Did a teenager teach you that?
No, it doesn't always do it. It's kind of selective. You have to kind of make a hard thing and sometimes it doesn't, sometimes it doesn't. Anyway, uh, it's, uh, finicky. Um. I think I can do it. There we go.
Would you be willing to chair or?
I would be open to it. Um, I do wanna just throw it out there. I do travel quite a bit. So there would be some dates that I'm, I'd probably be remote. Uh, so my in-person presence is not excellent. So yeah, I'd certainly be open to it. Um, I think there's also a lot of knowledge in this room too. And, and I really, really value that and would lean on that. Some of your experts in your field and that's very apparent. And so, um, I would accept that as long as I can lean on the rest of you, which would be great. I would propose that Meredith would be vice.
I really appreciate it. I do not, I'm not up for that. Thank you though. I appreciate.
Um, Ashton, based on what you just said, I, I, I hear you travel a lot. I think everybody agrees. You are most, most excellent spokesperson for our group. Um, but I also appreciate what you were saying about traveling and the pressures of trying to. Jump in and do things from the road is hard. Um, and I wonder, are you suggesting that you would still be happy to chair? If that's the way things turned out, or would you be more comfortable staying in the vice chair, uh, seat? If that's how.
Yeah, I'm certainly comfortable staying in the vice chair if there's somebody that would like to chair. Um, I know we talked about this, I guess it was a year ago. There was not a ton of interest in people chairing. And so I, I can certainly fill that wall if there's somebody else that is interested to do that. It's kind of a happy answer for you. So I guess I'll reopen that. Is anybody interested in some, wanting to chair?
I'm willing to step into either role if the commission would like that.
Do you have a preference?
Not really. I'm the newest one to this group, so, and I'm very aware of that. Um, I've been on another commission for four years. So I feel like I've got a little bit more in my pocket, but I don't have a strong preference. I'd be happy to support the chair as vice or, or to, or to be chair. But I'm really willing to step up in either way, if, if the commission would like that. And I won't take it personally at all. If you don't want me to take that, that's, that's why we have votes and, you know, polls and all that, so.
Does anyone wanna make a nomination? I mean, I'm looking at the clock and if no one else does, I don't want it, you know, to dominate. But I, I would be glad to make a nomination if that helped move us forward. Or somebody else can.
Well, I'll just maybe ask the question. Does anybody else want to serve in one of those roles? Because otherwise by affirmation, I think.
Or, or we make Melissa such she's not here.
That's a dirty trick.
Yeah.
So does the process like if I say I nominate Ashton to be the president and Yanni to be the vice. Sorry, yeah, chair, forgive me, vice chair and vice chair. Is that how we do it?
Yep.
I think that would be great. I, we have seen.
I'll second.
Uh, you do a great job. And Yanni, I would love to see, you know, you in that role as well and see your leadership style and, um, as the vice chair. I think that would be great.
I second. So. I guess you.
Oh, so, uh, all in favor? We have a first and a second.
Are there any other nominations?
Oh, yes.
Hearing none. All in favor?
I. And I have a little reaction for you to. I wanted that one. Or this one.
Impressive.
I have so many tricks. Yay, congratulations, team.
Thank you. And Maddie, yeah, thank you guys. Maddie, I, again, you've set an incredibly high bar. And your knowledge and your experience is, is very much appreciated.
Well.
Yeah, I feel that. Maddie, you were a big reason why I was excited to join this board, because I had seen how you. Ran meetings and how you supported each of the members and how much time and effort you put into it. And I have appreciated you chairing for all of this time. So thank you very much.
Oh, that's very generous. Thank you so much.
All right, we're running out of time. Is there anything for reports and announcements or?
Not tonight, no.
Not tonight? And we don't have any citizen comments?
Jolene, do you have any public comments?
No, again, thank you for the invitation.
Thank you.
Oh, well, I just, um, wanted to touch back on the land use segment, because I did feel like, well, fir- first of all. Forgive me to you, Maddie, and also the whole group that I didn't get my comments in. Uh, so if you're willing, I will try to do that by tomorrow. Uh, if you're willing to wait on the release of those, but, um, will we have another opportunity? Cause I did feel like there were a couple of things that I'd like to touch back on. So I didn't know, it's not on the plan, so I didn't know if that was. Or, or basically your, your combined document will go and then we'll kind of just see how the, the next. Draft is.
Yeah, I think Christina left. Um, I will, I can, I'll send you the co- a copy of it. Um, and you can just look and if anything's missing, you can reply to me or Mark or Christina directly with anything you wanna add to it. Maybe that would be helpful to, to see that document. Um.
Yeah, I think.
Is that right, Mark? Can I, can I, can I, should I send it? Individually or should?
I think it's appropriate and we could add to it. I think others have comments. And by sending it a day or two this week, it's not gonna affect anything. Uh, but then once it goes to Christina, she considers all of them. We're gonna move to different elements. But those are not baked in stone. So there's always an opportunity to revisit. You'll see them later. And as we head to June, some of these elements will become satisfactory. But in the end, I'm imagining the process is. We've gone through everything. How do you feel? And then everything's fair game until you take a vote.
So we should, or a doc, I should wait for a document from you and then I can add to that document.
I, I think Maddie's gonna send the latest and greatest, that's.
Yeah.
Right up till six thirty tonight. And then there's been discussion of adding things. And as long as we've captured everything, if we haven't, keep sending it. You know, we'll keep adding it. Um, but at, at some point we'll feel like we, we've got. And that's when Christina's gonna go, okay. Spend time on it and it's in her hands. But what's today, Tuesday?
So is it, I'm sorry, forgive me. So is it gonna be like Google Doc that we can add directly to it? Or should I send comments directly to like through Nick? Or should I send comments to?
Uh, not to Nick. He's gonna be out a little while. My main concern is that we've captured that there's a handoff. Right? That we're not augmenting adding to an earlier version. So we have the six thirty.
Yeah, I, Mark, how about this? I will send out a, the copy to Meredith. Meredith, if you can look it over, if there's anything she wants to add, she can send it back to me with her comments. And then if anybody else, um, still has comments after this evening, just, just email me if you have comments and we can ex- and I'll, I'll share with you the latest document. You know, for your reflection. I guess let me just ask, uh, Sam, you've made comments. Ashton, do you have any comments? Or have you looked at it and you're like, you're fine with this iteration?
I'm good at this iteration, yeah.
Okay, and Yanni, and then David, are you fine with this iteration? Oh, you're gonna say that. Okay, so David and Meredith, I'll send you the marked up copy right now. And then you guys can send any feedback you have. And then once it's marked up with both of your comments, um, then. I'll share it with Mark and Christina and then Mark can make it part of a, like a, you know, like an official distribution so that it's a matter of public record. Um, which I think is like what we're trying to do. And I, so I can't email everyone all at once because of that, so. So that'll be the plan. Meredith and David, I'll send you separate emails and then when you send it back, we'll make it available to everybody.
And Maddie, I'll turn around those, those suggestions I mentioned tonight on the two topics. Also proposed language on the wildlife, the salmon plan and the artificial light. I'll get those to you in the next twelve hours or so. Also, if you wanna add them to the batch.
Yeah, or, and, and also feel free to copy Christine. I don't need to be in the middle of it. I think last week you were just trying to figure out a way to not burden Christina with like. Notes from a bunch of people. But yeah, you can, you can just send it directly to her too, because that's a direct insertion.
Okay.
Okay, um, agenda for next meeting?
You have the slide, uh, and it's in the packet and there's some magic tickets. We're moving forward.
Climate transportation.
Yeah. So our next step is to talk to parent peers. We still owe them some information, but their first kind of touch in with you guys.
Okay, great.
And new materials.
New materials. We have our special meeting on March fourth. That will be done via Zoom. We're gonna send out that link now that we've all approved the dates. And then we'll meet as a planning commission on March twelfth. Twenty one. And, uh, great, is there a motion to adjourn?
So, nice.
All in favor?
Thank you all. Actually, do the, so did the new term start with the next meeting or the next month? So when, when do they?
Like when? I assume it's from now forward. Okay, so the next special meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. I, enjoy your trip.
Thanks.
So, okay.
It's been great, yeah.
Bye. Thank you.